Hey, Andrew. Good, tired, good. How about you?
About the same. About the same. What we have here so far, we have Danielle, I thought I saw Tamika. So Teresa. Molly.
Hi, Molly.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Hi, how are you? Okay, okay.
Do we have Teresa?
Hello, Tamika, I do not see Teresa online yet. Let's give her like a minute or two and then we can get started though, Andy.
Agreed.
I may or may not be able to stay on this call. I don't know if you want to count me as a. As quorum because I am. I'll be listening, but I I won't be able to go in and out, maybe it depends.
Yep, and we're okay with the quorum because we got three already, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go, hi Teresa. Okay. Teresa can hear me? Did we lose Tamika too?
But Tamika just said she's gonna be listening in, but we'll.
Yeah, I do realize she was gonna go off so fast, um, all right, well.
I'm still here, I just.
Yeah. Theresa. Well, I'm just gonna give her a moment to log back on, I think. All the word.
Mine didn't either yesterday.
Yeah.
But I have jumper cape or something. And a new battery, so we should be okay. I can give you a go.
Thank you very much.
Andy, I'd say let's get started and and we'll catch Teresa up when she jumps in.
Oh, good, you just say she had to restart her computer. Okay, so I'm gonna call a meeting to order and we will call quickly Danielle Bailey.
Yes.
And Molly Kachoyak.
Yeah.
Tamika Vukovic.
Here.
Andrew Franklin is also here. Then item number two is a motion to approve the agenda. Implying to section nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-four, is there a motion?
So moved.
Molly, can I give you a second?
Certainly, second.
Okay, then we'll call both Danielle.
Aye.
Okay, and Molly.
Aye.
Tamika, if you're still there.
Aye.
And Franklin, aye, motion carries, okay. Good evening.
So did you want to start with your statement first, or did you want me to go and then you could chime in after I'm finished and then we'll let each court member go?
Well, I can go, I mean, and it'll be just a couple of minutes. Statement, I want to say thanks to everyone who showed up today. Not just within school district, but also parents of community as well. I want to talk to just a bit about what it is that we've been trying to address, but also my personal perspective on what is that we're dealing with. Larry is going to have a discussion about where we are right now and get into, I think, a few more details. We're also gonna talk about how the public input is gonna be captured through a community survey and Larry's gonna get to that, but I want to start out by just saying that safety and education have to be twin priorities here. They both have to be forwarded at the same time as we go into the upcoming school year. And for me, as I approach how the year should unfold, I believe we should strive to provide really to the best extent we can, most normal or traditional setting possible, but still taking all necessary precautions. We can't eliminate risk, but I believe we can mitigate the risk to an acceptable fashion. I think that that's our district's obligation. I'm like you, I'm like other parents, if I don't believe school setting is safe, I'm not gonna allow my child to attend. In the midst of this original crisis from spring, school districts were required to close their physical buildings and engage in remote learning. So in that respect, the decision was easy, we had no choice, but the pandemic can be with us for at least another year, and so we need to adapt. Like you, I recognize that work schedules have become a hardship as well. We want to get back to work, we want to provide for families, and we also realize the difficulties of doing that in the current circumstances. The truth is that our virtual environment is necessary, but it was far from perfect. And despite our best efforts, it proved to have several limitations. So we need to meet everyone at their needs and at the school district, I don't think we accomplish that if students are just not part of the building. We now, at this point, have two months before the next school year, right? And we have the benefit of time to plan what the next twelve days, month is gonna look like. We need to maximize those opportunities for student-teacher interaction and for special needs. We need to return to the most robust educational setting we can while protecting our children. With that, I've spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the DPI guidance, speaking with healthcare professionals, talking to Molly at length and listening to parents. And so I've identified eight broad categories of action, I think, that I would pay particular attention to. These are the starting point for me, areas of attention that I'm going to be giving for reopening the building. So the first area is key actions. Some of the biggest and easiest steps we can take to reduce the risk are social distancing, mask-wearing, hand washing, and thorough disinfecting and cleaning. Shielding should be placed where it's necessary and room capacity should be reduced. Young, exceptional needs students may have difficulties communicating through masks, and that's gonna be something we need to work through. We may need to consider alternatives for certain groups or using clear masks or shields. The second area is bus transportation and entry and departure from the building. Buses need to be monitored to ensure social distancing, that people are wearing masks, including drivers, that the buses are being disinfected and that there are few people on the bus. We need to have staff at entry points to the building, ensuring social distancing and mask-wearing is a student issue, but here's something that I think is really important, taking the temperature of every person who enters the building. Every student should be screened before they come in so that we know there is a potential issue. And ideally, we could do that in a traceable manner, but you know, we need to know if students are at risk when they enter that building. When students leave, they need to be monitored when they leave so that they aren't congregating. We don't want them to congregate, you know, before the doors open either, right? So we need to have additional support from teachers and staff outside. Maybe we give a staggered period to enter or to leave. We need to have masks for people who don't have them or can't afford them. Hand sanitizer and soap dispensers. Have to find a way to quarantine students from others if they're sick. Establish patterns and distance markers in the hallway. And again, a thorough cleaning every day, at least. One of the sticking points for me, and something that's been really problematic, something that's impacted my ability to take my family places, is the bathroom situation. You know, bathrooms are, you know, just a breeding ground for germs, and I think that we need to have strict protocols for bathrooms. We ought to limit the capacity to at least, to no more, I said, one person at a time. We should have people wait outside, we see if we can cover them. We should only use every other stall or urinal. We should have touchless sinks, dryers, and towel dispensers, and again, extra soap and hand sanitizer. After, you know, food and lunch service, we, it should be grab and go, I don't see any other way to do it. We have to see if we can make bubblers touchless, or really people should be using bubblers at all. We need to space people out during meals. We need to overall reduce the capacity of the people who are in the building, okay? The school should not be a maximum capacity. And so, as I'm about to tell you too, I think that we need to split students into different groups and alternate attendance so that we have cool five days a week, but that we don't have all the students in all the same places five weeks a week. Schools should be conducted as close to normalcy as possible. Whether virtual or in-person, classes should be in smaller groups and using fewer desks. Attendance should be taken, set schedule should be implemented.
Right.
Yeah. Grades and feedback must also be provided. We have to have report cards and have teachers follow through on the report cards and the comments. We have to have students with deadlines for their assignments. And we should also have teachers implement regular office hours, both virtual and in-person. We should have ability to stream and record classes, either live or additionally with supplemental material. But we can't forget, and I think that one thing that took a detour, were the non-three-R classes, right? Not reading, writing, arithmetic, band and orchestra, choir, art, tech ed, and FIAED, all right? And I know, for example, Mr. McCarthy did a lot of extreme measures to make sure that he met every student every week. He went to people's houses, checked on equipment from a social distance, you know. We need people who are going to do that to reach out to other students, and there's gotta be a way to do that with respect to music and orchestra, and I'm sure that Ms. Alvarez has done that. But art, tech ed, and FIAED. And resource too. We need to have meaningful opportunity for education to flourish on all levels. I know it's hard to do a lot of these things that are traditionally group activities. You know, we need to find a way to create it, and I think that physical education is really important right now. You know, it took a backseat for the last three months and years, but our kids have not had a lot of exercise, they haven't had a lot of group exercise, they need to get back into the swing of things. So we need to get them physically engaged, and we need to find ways to engage students outside the classroom and extracurriculars, because I think a lot of their normal activities are gonna be sidelined because they can't compete in certain things, or, you know, they can't participate in certain clubs. So virtual social engagement, virtual YACs, what have you. Those are eight broad categories and it's a mouthful, and I understand that. And I also understand that those are things that I'm looking at, and you as parents may be looking at those things, you may be prioritizing them in a certain way, and we need to hear that. The school district relies in the community at large, and so parents have asked me to do your part, communicate with us, participate with us. And into next year, if your child is sick or has symptoms, keep your child at home, tell the school. But tell us what isn't, isn't working so that we can, you know, adjust. We're gonna try to do things, I hope, on a, on a trimester basis, so whatever we implement, we can change or alter if need be as the year goes forward. The school needs to do its part in communicating and responding to, that's what we're trying to do. I know there's a lot of questions about how we're gonna get that community input. We're gonna have another school board meeting. We talked about several potential follow-up meetings and or listening sessions, but one of the big things that we want to do is to engage the community with the survey so that we can track a lot of these key metrics and see what parents really find important, and to give you time to do that. We also hope, I personally hope, that businesses do what they need to do to make those necessary accommodations for parents, because whatever schedule looks like, it's probably not gonna be "normal," quote unquote. So, you know, businesses need to understand that. And finally, as our state representatives, I ask them to please support our public education, particularly in these challenging times. If you want us to educate students in person in a pandemic, give us more resources. Parents and community members, I ask you to provide that input, like I said, and again, one of the best ways, most immediate ways. We'll be doing the community survey, survey that's gonna go out shortly. Like I said, we'll have visitor participation at our next board meeting, and in the meantime, we're all reading every letter that you send to us and every phone message that you leave to us, and we're calling you back and doing what we can. I know that's across the board. So that's a lot to digest, that's a big mouthful, that's, you know, my two cents worth, but I thank you all for listening.
All right, thanks, Andy. Again, I think we should have started with this, I apologize, but for our community members, this is a committee meeting, there's also there's a committee meeting, which means there is not participation. If you have an urgent question or if you are confused about something, if you are on a laptop, on the bottom of your screen, there's a chat box. If you go into that and you ask a question, I will try to answer that as we go through, if it's, if it's, if it's appropriate at that time. Otherwise, I can return that, your call or an email to you at the end of this meeting. Any other board member want to start before I go? Danielle or Molly or Tamika, and I'm not sure if Teresa made it back on or not, she was having some.
No, she's here.
Okay. So Danielle.
No.
Tamika or Teresa, a quick statement before we get started, or do you want to wait after me?
Okay, I'll wait until after. I hear what you have to say.
All right.
I'm here.
So I'm not gonna, I ended up going back and forth and was thinking I could make this into probably about a four-hour presentation and have everybody, you know, drooling by the time we're done because they're so bored. So we're gonna try to go through this fairly quickly, but at the same time, as thorough as possible. I want to start out because like we always do with every board meeting, we should have goals. Our goal from an administrative team, we've met multiple times now, is to make sure we have all kids or as many kids as possible in school, in the buildings, as much as we possibly can. We also know, and Andy, Mr. Franklin, talked a little bit about social distancing, but we also have to be realistic. If you've ever been in a first grade classroom, there's no such thing as social distancing in a first grade classroom. Kids are social, they are, they are social people, social beings, that especially younger kids communicate through touch just as much as they do through talking. And so we have to understand that, I think, having social distancing is a great goal, and we will teach it, and we will help our kids to social distance, but we also have to understand that in some instances, it's just not feasible. For those of you with seventh graders, I'll tell you right now, if you want to social distance, tell them to hug everybody, because they will do the opposite, because that's what seventh graders do. So if that's happening in your family, don't worry about that, that's normal behavior. I've been had three kids finish seventh grade already. Masks, I'm a big believer that masks help deter the spread of COVID-19, but I also know that nonverbal communication is as important, if not more important, than the actual words being spoken. So Mr. Franklin talked about possibly face shields instead of face masks for teachers because the facial expressions of teachers is as important as the words that are coming out of their mouth. And we also have kids with hearing loss and hearing impairments that when you're talking through a mask, it just isn't quite the same. So I'm gonna start, and I just want to start with, thank goodness that today is July first, and that we do have a full two months in about, in exactly two months from now, on September first, your kids will be coming home from their first day of school, either if it's in-building or virtual, September first is our first day of school. And we're gonna learn more. And we also know that the decision that we come up with over the next couple of weeks will probably not be the decision that we end the school year with. So Mr. Franklin talked about this, my goal is that I'm gonna recommend a school reopening plan that will start on September first, and that we will try to run it through Thanksgiving, which is the first trimester, knowing that we will have to evaluate it constantly and make changes going forward. Then the other part that I want to start before getting into details is the equity piece that I think this district is cognizant of. We know that COVID-stricken people of color are much more than Caucasians, and we know that as, that we are a diverse district, diverse system with more kids of color and more adults of color than any of our surrounding districts, so we have to take that as part of just who Glendale is. But we also know as the Pediatric Society came out with that kids need to be in school, so my goal is to create a plan or plans that will allow each family to choose what is in their best interest, that we will have a virtual plan if that's what's needed for your family, but also an in-person plan for as many kids as possible. To get to that, Mr. Franklin talked about, and Shannon will be going through the survey tonight, we're gonna actually show it to people online. If you are a parent in the district, you will get that survey next Tuesday is my plan. We're talking about sending it out now, but with the holiday weekend, it will get lost in people's mailboxes, so we're gonna send it out Tuesday with a pretty quick turnaround of July thirteenth, so that we can have the data ready for the July fifteenth board meeting. So that we can have the data ready for the July 15th board meeting. Staff members, if your staff is online, you guys are going to get a survey tomorrow. So included in today's posting was the Education Forward document that came from the Department of Public Instruction. I think it's a pretty good resource. And I would tell you that I was impressed with our administrators. They've really devoured it. They've deciphered it to meet Glendale needs. And it starts with, if you've been able to read it, it starts with assumptions. And I think there are some decent assumptions there. Number one, that COVID isn't going to go away. Mr. Franklin talked about that also. COVID's here for the next 12, 18 months until there's, there's an actual relief from it. We, we just don't know when that's going to be. We also need to be aware that we might need short-term closures. Either by a grade level, a classroom level, or an entire school level. And so as a district, we will have plans in place that if and when that happens, we will be able to maintain the best educational setting that we can. Education Forward continues on with several different scenarios that they talk about. And we will, and each of them are in the survey that's coming out to you. We talk about a four to five day in-person schedule. Education Forward talks a lot about doing a four-day student week. Usually in their, what their recommendation would be a Monday, Tuesday in school. Wednesday, a virtual learning day for thorough cleaning of buildings. And then Thursday, Friday. In, again, back in person. As an administrative team, our goal is to have students in, in the school building five days per week. We believe that we can do thorough cleaning on a week, on a daily basis, on a nightly basis. But we will have to see. I think we're not positive about that. But I think that that's, our goal is to have kids in schools every day as, as many days as possible. The Education Forward also talks about, and Mr. Franklin talked a little bit about this, the, the two-day rotation. Where kids are coming in for two days and virtual for three days every week. And that's different kids each day so that you maintain small class sizes. I would, I would argue that if that's the choice, that we would do it on a weekly basis. So that we'd have A week and then B week. So half the kids in, coming into school, week one, virtual week two, and back and forth. I know as a parent and as a grandparent, that that is havoc to any home scheduled. So again, that's why our goal is to have as many kids in school as possible. They continue to talk about, how about elementary kids face-to-face? We know that, that the younger the student, the more they need to be in person with teachers. And so can we do something that is elementary in face-to-face and secondary as a virtual or a different option? So without getting anybody overly excited or overly concerned. If today was August 30th and we're starting school in two days, here's my plan today. Knowing that's probably going to change and it won't be a plan probably within a week. But if we had to start today, my recommendation would be that first of all, and realize that I'm an early childhood fan. I would recommend to the board that we do not hold four-year-old kindergarten this year. And I'll get into reasons why. But we would have in-person school from kindergarten, five-year-old kindergarten through sixth grade. And we'd limit each classroom to 15 students. Because the size of our rooms can handle 15 students and maintain some good social distancing. Each of those classrooms would have a certified teacher and a second adult in that room. So that there are two adults. Virtually what, what we would be creating is individual one-room schoolhouses. If you think back of, back in the old days, one-room schoolhouses. That those 15 students and two adults would really become their own family. And that they would maintain the art, music, tech ed, FIAID, and all the, everything about a school just as a group of 17 people. The reason behind that is if, if, and I should say when, somebody in that family gets sick or has COVID-19, that we can quarantine just that one group of kids. We don't have to close down the entire school. Again, that's, there's a lot of planning that would have to go into that if, if we would make that happen. What this does is cause seventh and eighth grade to be virtual. And if you are a seventh and eighth grade parent, you're pulling your hair out saying no. And I understand that. So we also came up as, as an alternative idea is doing a second shift. And it's going to be on your survey. And it doesn't have to be seventh and eighth grade, but we could do feasibly do, run a second shift of school from 2:30 until 7:30 PM. Where kids would be able to come in and still have face-to-face contact. Be at fifth and sixth or seventh and eighth, but we'd need two grade levels that would have to do basically a second shift. And so those are the things that we are talking about. As administrators, we are really trying to be creative. We are also communicating closely with Mapledale, Fox Point and Nicolay. But as I started the equity piece, I, I believe that Mapledale and Fox Point and Glendale should be as close as possible. But we are each different districts with different needs. So we don't have to be identical, but we should be communicated and we are doing that. I was going to go very thoroughly and have my administrators go very thoroughly through the Education Forward document with you. But you guys are all smart people and you're able to read it. And I, you know, we can do that, but we have gone through it very thoroughly. We've gone through the operations piece of just restarting school and what does it look like? Technology, using technology, making sure that we have staff who's got the right professional development to make sure that if and when kids need to be taught virtually, we have our best instructors doing that. We've talked about how do you fund some of these things and different types of funding. So that, we've gone through that as administrators. We've really talked a lot about the health and safety of our kids. Not only the mitigation, as Mr. Franklin was talking about. How do you do lunches? How do you get kids into the bathroom and out of the bathroom? How do you maintain temperatures of kids, making sure that everybody's healthy? But even more importantly to me is the mental health of our staff and of our students. Both our, our staff and students, we need to make sure that they are mentally healthy. Rearranging my notes here. We talked a lot, we've spent a lot of time on instructional programming. And Mr. Franklin, you'll be glad to know that we, not only we're talking, reading and writing the math, but we were talked about the library. How about special educational needs? EL students, English language students, gifted and talented programming, FIAID art, tech ed, music, all of those are necessary part of schools. And then lastly, and you touched on this, is out of school time. What do we do with our co-curriculars? If I had to make a recommendation today, and luckily I don't, I would, I would probably make the recommendation that there are no co-curriculars for the first trimesters. But that's something that I think we can hash out over the next two months. So with that, that's a lot to think about. And so board members, I'm going to ask you for your questions and comments. And then after we are done with that discussion, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kilton. And she will actually pull up both surveys for you guys to see so that the community can see it. Again, if you are a parent, you're going to get this survey on Tuesday. If you are a staff member, you're going to get a different survey as soon as tomorrow. So board members, questions or concerns?
Larry, I had a question.
Yep.
You mentioned having a second shift of seventh through eighth graders. Presumably those kids are 12 to 14-year-olds, right?
Correct.
So presumably your plan includes the assumption that there will be no extra. You said something about no co-curriculars, but presumably you're of the beliefs that there'll be no like fall baseball with Glendale Little League or any other extracurricular athletic activities, activities like Boy Scouts or something they might otherwise attend.
Well, and I think that's going to be one of the tricky points. Because, and that's why I said it doesn't necessarily have to be seventh and eighth grade that does the second shift. Maybe it is third and fourth to a second shift because there's less co-curriculars for third and fourth. But I do believe that if we want 1,180 students to be in school, then we're going to have to think about it differently to make, to maintain social distancing to the best of our ability. Which would possibly mean a second shift. Now, I haven't even, I haven't even talked to our staff. I'm not sure if we could staff a second shift of teachers or not. So there's a lot that would have to go into that. But yeah, I'm, I'm anticipating, unlike the WIAA, which has gone, come out and said that we will have sports and co-curricular activities. I'm just of the belief that social sporting events just are not going to be able to happen, at least in the fall. I hope I'm wrong, but that's what I'm thinking right now.
Yeah, I, I wasn't questioning the validity or efficacy of a second shift. I was questioning the, the assumptions behind it that no other extracurricular athletic activities will be in the background.
And I also know that our seventh and eighth grade students are probably our number one babysitters out there. And so it might not be possible for, it could be seventh and eighth grade. It might have to be other. And so we don't specify that in the survey. We just asked parents if they would be willing to think about having kids go to school from 2:30 till 7:30.
I, I have a quick question about just the idea of parents who opt to not have their students attend school. Or if the district decides to, as a district, we decide to have two groups of kids or classes of kids stay at home. Do we have the capacity legally and just through resources to record those classes and post those somewhere? I mean, is that a legitimate option for our students? Or is that something that we have available?
You touched on a couple important points there. Yes, it is legal to film a classroom, provided that the teacher's using it for their own purpose. So we would have to talk to our district attorneys. I believe that you can share those videos or live stream those videos with specific students. And, and you're able to do that safely that it isn't out of, like, somebody can hack into it. If I'm the teacher and I'm videotaping my class and you're a student, but you're at home because you're not able to come in, you should be able to view me through a very secure link that isn't anywhere else. And provided the teacher does have the right to say yes or no to that. But I'm assuming our teachers would, would understand that that's what's needed right now.
And that's something that we have the capacity for? Or is that something that, that we, that the teachers would be able to readily get? If that's something.
I've, I've been told that we have the capacity, we have the, the infrastructure to do it. I don't know. We have, we haven't done it, but that doesn't mean we're not able to do it, so.
Lot of professional development happening, I imagine. Okay, thank you. I have some questions, lots of them, but I'll try to, try to wrap them in. And so my biggest question is about the process for the next couple of weeks leading up to the board meeting and the next couple of months leading up to the start of school. I wonder how we will engage with the community, with the board. Like, so how, how are we going to keep having these discussions and making decisions, you know, over the next two weeks and two months? The DPI instruction, as I read it, gave me lots of questions about what policies and plans we might want to review at the district because of the changes around bullying, discipline, attendance, communication, cybersecurity. I mean, lots of things that you guys are probably considering, but that as a parent or community member, we might not. You know, I, I would want to know how some of these things are going to impact my child and as a board member. The DPI also talked about like certain committees or task force that they recommended implementing prior to the start of the school year, which I don't think we have, but I'm wondering if it could be of use, you know, now or going forward. Return to instruction, a mental health. Well, I know we sort of have the mental health team or a mental health collaborative, like a pandemic or emergency response. You know, committee or task force where we're going to engage key stakeholders so that we know where we have the right people and, and communication. You know, going back and forth between leaders in the community. So those are some of like the big picture things I think I need to understand so I don't go too specific in this meeting. If we've got, if there's going to be that kind of follow-up and engagement.
Mr. Franklin and I have not had that discussion. I, I'm assuming that we will have many more board meetings, probably at least, you know, bi-weekly, if not more often. I, I think not only do we have to understand how we're going to restart school, but as a board, you also have a judiciary duty to pass a budget at July 15th. That's going to be printed in the paper. And then we pushed the August one back on purpose. So I foresee that we'll probably not only have the July 15th one. I would recommend that we have another meeting probably July 29th, to keep it on Wednesdays. And do every other Wednesday, either as a committee of the whole or as a full board meeting with input from the, from the public. But that's, you know.
But does that mean, does that mean we wouldn't meet with, we wouldn't meet prior to the, our board meeting in a couple of weeks? Where are we going to be asked to vote on something in a couple of weeks as far as like a reopening plan?
Not on July 15th. From my understanding, from talking with Andy briefly, is that July 15th is, is get input from people. We will have the data from the survey. We can share that. One of the questions that we asked on the survey that we talked about as an administrative team is we also, the second question is the ethnicity of your child or children in the, in the district. Because if we send out 1,000 surveys and we get back 400 and 380 of them are from Caucasians, we know that we did not survey half of our families and community members. So that's why that, the ethnicity question is on there. So that we are hoping that we get a broad response from all of our community members so that it's, it's a true response.
And Larry, just to follow up on that, I mean, I think if we were going to take action once things can come in shape by July 29th, that gives us, at least that was my impression talking to you before, it gives us sufficient time to implement what those practices would be.
Yes, it, I think it does. And I, and talking to our neighboring districts, most people are looking for an August 1st, late July, first week of August. As this is the plan that we plan on going with on September 1, knowing that it still might change even in August. But we need to get something out to our families saying, especially for, for drastic changes. Again, the goal is hopefully, and we may be from a political standpoint, not that we're ever be forced. I think this document, DPI makes it very clear that it's a local control issue. But I know talking with different legislators in the area, they are pushing hard for all kids in classes. And don't worry about COVID, that the kids don't get sick and so therefore we don't need to worry about it. I don't necessarily agree with them, but that's the push from the state level.
Can I ask more questions? So I'm just curious, so who, I know you meant, you've alluded to it before, but who are you meeting with sort of, and how often in terms of you got your, the administration formulating, you know, their best practices or ideas for our reopening?
So I have, I have twice a week meetings with the administrators, but, but mostly every day. I'm talking with somebody. From a region-wise, I'm meeting once a week with our SWSA group, which is most of Southeastern Wisconsin. And then from a statewide, we participate once every other week. And then with our partner districts and actually most of the North Shore, we do it twice a week. So Port Washington, Cedarburg, Meckuan, Germantown, Brown Deer, Whitefish Bay, all four of our, of our districts, Nicolay, Mapledale, Fox Point and Shorewood meet twice a week. And then right after that meeting, I meet up with just the four superintendents for our partner districts. And so I will tell you, one of the differences is there's a big political difference between Milwaukee. And so I will tell you, one of the um, differences is there's a big political difference between Milwaukee County and Ozaki County. Ozaki County, Cedarburg, Meckuan, Port Washington, Germantown are pushing full steam ahead. They truly believe that they will have every child in every classroom. Uh, they are willing to do sports, they're willing to do just about anything as, to make it look like a regular school year. Whereas Milwaukee County uh, superintendents uh, don't see it the same way. The Shorewoods, Whitefish Bays, uh, Greg Cabar over at Nicolay, um, Brown Deer. Um, we're viewing it as we're not sure if we can have every student in every day and, and do it safely for our kids.
Larry, I got a question for you about K four. Um, and uh, just a couple of things about it. First off, uh, what are we anticipated to have in K four next year?
Uh, we currently have, the last I asked, which was last week, Thursday, uh, we had sixty-one registered for Kers. And the reason that I'm, um, I went through our staffing plan and to make the two adults in every classroom, K five through sixth grade, that's the reason I needed, I needed those bodies, basically.
No, I, I am.
And the space over at Parkway's. In my mind, we would do kindergarten, K five, one and two at Parkway. We'd actually move third grade over to Glen Hills, third and fourth would be down in the, in the midsection of Glen Hills with fifth and six upstairs. We can do that because it, it, we have the space to do it.
A couple of things to follow up on there. First of all, I mean, you know, usually there's three or four sections, but they're only half day. So, you know, I mean, I understand about the ratio issue, but you know, it's, it's ironic that the half-day students would be an issue. But in there in K four and there, I mean, if it's only sixty-one, which seems a little bit low. Um, you know, what we're doing is, you know, we're, we're creating a little bit more of a hardship over, you know, people that would have already been in the district. So I was thinking, what are some ways to solve that? And the question I'd actually had for you to segue is what about Good Hope School? We have, even if we have full uh, capacity there, my understanding was we always had thirty-day notices uh, so that, you know, we needed the space for educational purposes. Uh, we could, uh, you know, use that space. Um, you know, I don't know if there's something that we can do to divert K four or even K five there. I understand there's a lot of building issues that are out there, things that we've been talking about. But is it possible to use Good Hope School for, you know, part of uh, you know, our educational needs? Staffing I get, but you know, in terms of space?
Uh, yeah, Good Hope is a possibility. I think the problem with using, and we've, they'll talk about this, that as if, if and when we choose to go to full-day K four, um, we would either have to put some major renovations in the, over at Good Hope because the buildings, the side of the building that we, that we have access to, that's easy to get to, um, we would have to redesign with bathrooms in the classrooms. They don't have them in there right now. Uh, the other option that we've talked about is adding on to Parkway Elementary School. Um, neither one of those things are gonna be able to happen by September one. And so, yes, is, is Good Hope a possibility? It is. I, um, I'm not sure if uh, i- if it's ready for K four and K five students. Cause the part of the building that isn't the daycare right now is being used as a, as a Hillel High School. Um, and so.
Hey, Larry, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, I, I did, with the, in regards to Good Hope, I don't think we should even touch it, and I'll tell you why. Because parents are already having issues with daycare as it is. Taking back that school, what about that huge daycare? I know it's, it may not be a big deal, but I have watched parents try to figure out what they're gonna do with their kids that are not school age. So I just think adding.
I'm sorry. But just to be clear, I don't think that, uh, I, I wasn't talking about taking out Glendale Heights. I was talking about the other half of the school. I think Glendale Heights actually has a much stronger lease and uh, we wouldn't be able, if we wanted to push them out.
But it's still another high school. It, it's still another school that's there. I mean, there are students there, correct, on the other side of that?
Yes, there are.
So.
There, probably a couple of rooms that we could get into uh, fairly quickly. Um, between a, you know, there's several other uh, small nonprofit businesses over there. Uh, piano, jazzercise, some of those things that we could uh, take over if we had to. But it would be, it would be a process.
Yeah, I just, um.
And the rooms aren't built like.
If all the things that we're trying to do put the hardship, I mean, we're trying to solve a, a, a problem where it's gonna be a hardship for everybody. I mean, with not knowing exactly how the school year is gonna run, um, how much funding we're gonna have, if we're gonna have additional funding, what resources are we gonna have to even implement half of what we're talking about? Um, but on top of that, putting added stress on a, a possible, a parent who has a, a kid in third grade, but you know, has another kid that's in daycare, we gotta try to try to figure out what to do within our own realm without bringing other entities in it, I guess. Um, this is a difficult, like, the situation you guys are, are, uh, this administration is in, I feel, I feel badly for because one, you have to try to figure out what's best for everybody because it's not just one student. And you're gonna get input from different parents and different administrators and different school board members who have their own own like way they see it. And I don't think anybody, not one single person is gonna be happy until COVID is over and all of our kids can come back. And then some people still won't be happy. Um, I, right now, I think whatever plan you, and I, I'm ready to finish hearing the rest of the plans or, you know, what you guys get um, to the meat of it is that it has to be something that is gonna work for everybody, but it can't just work for one kid. It can't just work for a group of kids. It has to be a universal kind of thing, like, um, I think Danielle was speaking on that. But it also this pro, I want people to go in with expectations that it may not fit everybody's need at the time that we decide what we need to do and we tweak as we go. And I think if people have that mindset, this is what we're gonna try to do as we go and I, as we try to implicate or implement this stuff, oh, here's an issue. Let's tweak this, let's tweak that. I think if people go into that mindset that this is a plan, we're gonna tweak it as we go, we won't have as many issues.
I, I totally agree with that. And I would say, I think communication, like strong communication is going to be key. And I wonder if, um, like I wonder if a working group or some kind of committee that, you know, we kind of can hold accountable that involves key stakeholders might make sense as we continue to tweak. And, you know, um, we, as we wanna get feedback from the community, from students, from parents and from teachers and staff and administration. Um, and I just wanna say, like, I looked at our website recently. The most recent news update was from like March on our website. And I wonder if that's one, one place we might be able to strengthen our communication with the community and give them, you know, more nuanced updates or provide meeting information or, or things like that um, to, to share there. I know not everyone has access to the internet website, but I just, you know, noticing that today, it just kind of made me think like we really should be thinking about all these ways to be reaching out and involving people.
I, Danielle, I'm all for if, if the board wants to create a committee, the board can do that. So you would actually, uh, you would propose to Andy that we, we should have a, a communications committee or uh, you can call it, you know, whatever you wanna call it, that's gonna include outside board members, besides board members, outside community members and our staff members. Um, we've done that in the past. I think it's, it's, it helps with communication. I think whatever we choose to do between the board and what, what I end up recommending, we have to get that out to as many people as quickly as we can. So we will use the Facebook pages and the, and the district website to get that out. One of the reasons, again, I, I created kind of a scenario just because it's July first. I think the first thing that we need to do is really listen to our community. And that's why the survey is going out on Tuesday so we can get their feedback. Because, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating that every parent wants their child back in, in school, knowing that there will be a few parents who are really, uh, because of uh, health-related concerns might not want. But if we come back and sixty percent of our parents say, no, I'd, I'd rather be virtual for the first trimester, then that kind of changes my thinking. We have to be prepared to do that then.
Larry, if I can circle back to what Danielle said, uh, and maybe you can just tell me if I'm making this up. But I read in the report from DPI that in the guidance, I believe that there's actually a strong suggestion for a, a community committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
That's where I got it from, yeah.
Yeah, and I was just about to say, uh, you know, it's been on my list to talk about. Uh, I don't know if you're talking about a standing committee for all communication members or if you're talking about uh, something that would apply specifically to this context. But I certainly think for the COVID crisis, it's a great idea and we can work on that.
We could call it the COVID nineteen committee.
Well, they, they have several suggestions related to return to instruction, the, the return to school, the reopening, what we're talking about now, um, a mental, mental health and then a pandemic response. Because this, we may be in this situation we found ourselves in at the end of last year where everything stops again. Um, and are we prepared for that, right?
And, and that is what the.
Yeah, there were various committees we could consider.
When I think with that committee, what I would do, what we've done, um, I was gonna have all the administrators and Jenica really, uh, Westphal dug deep into the instructional program and the teaching and learning. Um, and really, you know, the phrase that caught my ear when she was going through it with us as administrators was flashback to fast forward. So we have to learn about what we just went through, use what we've learned so to move forward. So the next time that we send everybody home, because there's a possibility that it will happen, how can we distance learn better?
Yeah.
And then we have to have the tech support for families. We have to have a professional development and collaboration time uh, for our teachers to make this happen. We really have to, I mean, we teach digital citizenship now, but we really have to dig deep and, and really teach di- digital citizenship. Um, we could have, again, hindsight's twenty twenty, uh, but we need to move towards more project-based learning so that if kids are at home for an entire week, they are, there, there's something for them to do besides just a math worksheet or to read or some, so that they're actually doing project-based learning. Um, again, I have quite a, uh, the administration has kind of gone through it and that's what I was going to talk about. Um, but I thought that you guys would get too terribly bored. But I think with this committee, what we could do is bring in specific and say, hey, that, this is the, we're gonna, this meeting is gonna be really on just opening schools. What does that look like? You know, Mr. Franklin talked about he wants every child and every adult to have their temperature taken as they come in the building. Is that feasible to do? I don't know. I, I mean, we could make kids wait in line. Um, what if it's raining outside? What if, you know, there's all sorts of what-ifs when you do those type of things. So we could do it from an operation standpoint, from an instructional standpoint, from the co-curricular standpoint. I, I, you know, I, my off-the-gut feeling is we won't do co-curriculars, but there might be, and I can come up with lots of reasons why there should be co-curriculars. Um, and maybe that's what parents really need and what, what they really want. So maybe we need to change our minds on that. So I, I love the idea of this uh, committee and opening up. I do, I, anytime I uh, hear a committee, I get a little concerned. I go back to the equity piece because not all voices are heard, are heard when you make it a volunteer com- committee. Because our parents who are very active are going to be part of that committee. And our parents who aren't able to be active, not that they don't wanna be, but they aren't able to, sometimes don't have their voices heard when, when you do that though. And I would just bring that up at every committee meeting saying, remember, this isn't about Danielle Bailey's child. This is about a thousand and eighty-one children, and so we have to do what's in the best interest of all. And look, we already got a volunteer for, uh, to help on the committee. Thanks, Lisa. Um, any other comments from board members? Otherwise, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I have one more. Um, I just wanna clarify the K four. That the reason you're sort of thinking about cutting K four, is it more staffing related or is it more related to cutting the, the number of students in the building, the sixty students?
Um, well, I'm anticipating, and I probably should have said this to Andy. At sixty-one right now is about average. We will probably end up at about eighty to eighty-five, which was, is normal.
Okay.
It's really, the reason that I thought that for the first time was for space. Because if you would go to fifteen kids for K five, uh, first and second, that's, you're gonna need at least twenty-one classrooms. And that's, that's the majority of, of Parkway. And then the staffing issue, we, if we maintain K four, we'd have to hire additional teachers. I don't have enough full-time teachers to go fifteen to one.
What do we lose in state aid?
Um, over a three-year running average, not that, I don't wanna get really technical and be brutally honest. K four kids count as point six FTEs. So at eighty students, let's say you're going to lose um, about a fifty, so about fifteen FTEs over three years, which is significant. Um, Rosie's on this and she would say, don't do it because she likes money, but I'm.
Can we stagger the classrooms in Parkway at all? Um, do an A B schedule or is put them in some way there?
A- again, if we wanted to, if the choice is to go in A B schedule or one week, second week, that would allow every student to come in and we wouldn't have to do this. I, I, in my mind, if we want an A B schedule or one week, second week, um, we'd be able to divide up both buildings. We'd have to make staffing changes. We would probably, and now I'm just going off the cuff here, as I haven't had a chance to talk to my administrators. But I would envision that, I'll use second grade as an example. If half the kids are coming in week one, four out of the five teachers would take a small number, probably close to twelve to fifteen kids. The fifth second grade teacher would be our virtual teacher for the other students. And then same with the next week. So we'd have in-person staff and a virtual staff member for the kids who are outside of school.
So it couldn't work like, you know, if we do seventh and eighth as a second shift, we couldn't do that with Parkway? Or like nine to one, something like that?
We could get wild and crazy. I, I, I like thinking differently, so.
Can I just follow up on the staffing? So with the current way you, you know, today you have to make a decision about how we reopen, is, are you anticipating needing to increase staff or paras or special?
So the.
Or decrease, or what is that looking like?
How I came up with K five through six in person with fifteen staff or fifteen kids, it allows me to have a teacher in every classroom and an additional adult in every classroom. Um, most times it's a teacher and a paraprofessional. We would have to increase um, some paraprofessional time, but not significantly. But we wouldn't have to hire more staff. We, we have just the right amount of staff to, to pull it off, K five through sixth grade at fifteen kids per classroom.
What about special ed staffing? Are we anticipating needing to ramp up there just because kids may be have followed the, behind when they come back or will need a disport?
So my, how I figured this out is our, our special ed teachers were not assigned to any one classroom. So that right now we have a special ed teacher per grade level. So for example, if we ended up with seven second grade classrooms, um, our second grade uh, special ed teacher would be able to meet the needs of all the second graders and go push into the class that's needed at the most at, at that given time.
I just wanna say, and just to follow up to, you know, what Danielle's saying, I don't want us to necessarily be beholden not hiring additional teachers. Um, and, and I know that's not a conversation for today, but I just wanna suggest that, you know, we need additional support, be it in special ed or we need, you know, additional support to carry off K four. support to carry off K four, uh, you know, or, you know, even seventh and eighth grade, however that works out. We all look at that because I think these are exceptional times and, you know, we've been working really hard on our budget. You know, we've been working really hard to, you know, pay down the fund balance. You know, we will, we, we're dealing with referendum as it is. I know that, you know, especially in the economy that we have, that, you know, the money is tight. But now might be, and then, again, I mean, I have no set opinion about it. I just want to say that now might be that time where you add extra staff, especially, you know, given the fact that we're where we are and we don't see an easy exit out of the situation.
So Andy, I, you just, that's music to the ears of Jenica, Shannon, Aidan, Naceef, Mallory, and, um, uh, whom I forget, and Sherry Tucker, but that is. You just, uh, you just gave cardiac arrest to Rosie. But no, I, I think that those are decisions that have to be made. And I think, uh, we all understand, you know, there's a fiscal responsibility of running a school district and we have to be fiscally responsible, but our first priority are, are students. And, and if we are to a point, and I've done this to the board in the past where we've started and I said, hey, we need another, this past year, we needed to increase the time of our K five paras and we did, because it was the right thing to do. And so you do have my word and I know that the, the principals and Dr. Kilton and Jenica Westfall, uh, will definitely come to you if they see a need for, for more staff.
I have one last question, Larry.
Yep.
Have you or Rosie heard anything about what the per pupil increase will be, if anything at all, or if it'll be negative, as has been suggested in the past? And or about, I recall hearing that, um, we thought the legislature would take into account all the savings we received from not having to like pay transportation, pay for, um, food services, et cetera, would take into account those savings and perhaps ding us accordingly. So have you heard anything, uh, from the legislature regarding those two items?
So the budget that I'm bringing forward, uh, in two weeks goes with our current law. And what I've heard from the legislature is they are really hoping not to change current law. There's an increase in that. It's $179 increase, $175, excuse me, increase per pupil for this year and an increase in special education aid from 24% to 30%. That's in current law. What I've been told from legislators and from the SWSA is if there's a budget repair bill, it won't be taken up until November, um, which is after the elections. So it won't, it won't affect this school year's money. It would affect 2021, 22 school year money. So we're pretty, we're pretty confident in the amount of money in the budget that we have this year. As far as, as, uh, I think we've done a nice job from a state-level educational system to let our legislators know that, uh, these hidden savings that they believe that educating in a pandemic is more expensive, not less expensive. And I think we've, we've shared that story well enough with all of our legislators that they're not, I don't hear that anymore. And so I think that they've heard this and they know that it's true. It is more expensive in a pandemic than it is, uh, in regular session, so. So with that, I want to give, uh, Shannon or Dr. Kilton, if you don't mind unmuting yourself and sharing your screen, she's gonna go through, uh, the parent survey, just kind of question by question. If you have comments or questions, uh, feel free to say, why are we asking that? Or if you, when we are done and you want an additional question, um, that this is the time to ask. So Shannon, are you on? I see.
Yes, I am.
All right. You're up.
Okay, great. Hello, everybody. I'm gonna start with the parent one and I'm gonna tell you upfront that this is going to be hard to read on your screen just because there's text involved and, um, so I'm gonna go through as much as I can the content, but as Larry said, you will get this, um, or all community members will get this on Tuesday, which is the normal day that our sta- our parent newsletter is sent out to all families. So, um, in order for me to show you how this works, I'm gonna have to select answers so that I can keep clicking. But, um, the first question talks about what grade levels your children or child is in. So I'm just gonna pick second grade. Larry talked about this question already. We want to make sure we are getting a good sampling of all of our students and families. Um, then we also wanted to have a feeling of students that receive special services.
Danielle, go ahead.
So you have to click something, right, to, to keep going? If people prefer not to answer this question, which I feel like maybe some might, should, would we want to just, you know, add a box like prefer not to say? I know we want this information, it's important, but generally when we see that question being asked, we, you know, people don't have to answer it if they don't want to.
That, that's an easy box. Thank you. That's the feedback that I'm looking for. But yeah, we can definitely add a box, I prefer not to answer. But you do, it, it is a, it won't let you go forward without answering.
Right.
Let's put that in.
Are you suggesting that that's in every question?
No, no, uh, just.
Race and.
Yeah.
So instead of other, I can put in there, I prefer not to say or prefer not to answer.
I would add that addition to the other.
Same with that. Okay. The next one is we want to really make sure that we're getting feedback from our parents with children that are receiving special programming. The reason there's one of above is because it is a required question, as the star indicates. The first thing about coming back to school is we talk about, are they comfortable, um, having their child return to school, um, and gives them the food choices? And then we also wanted feedback, um, that, or maybe don't fit the boxes, but that you might want to say something. Why did you make this selection?
Yeah, could you ask for like, um, like, cause the question when I went through this, cause I was actually answering it, is, um, like I wanted to elaborate, because I might feel very comfortable if X, Y, and Z are in place. I might feel somewhat comfortable if X, Y, and Z are, you know, happening. So I wonder if you could say, I mean, I get that it's asking why. I wonder if you could specify a little bit, like, you know, what would make you feel very comfortable or, I don't know, maybe that's unnecessary, but that's just.
I'm not sure there's enough variety in there. I mean, it just, it's, you know, it goes from zero to, you know, it just, I don't know. You might want to consider, and then not trying, this is a really good survey. I went through it before as well, but, you know, three, uh, you know, three choices. I'm looking at how someone might answer that. I think that you're gonna have people immediately go to the middle choice and there's not gonna be much variation.
Do you have a suggestion of another choice?
Like on a scale of one to five, you know, uh, how comfortable are you? And then we should have a little bit, you know, more of a gradation.
Gotcha.
So.
I, I would add, I'm sorry, Shannon, um, very comfortable, somewhat comfortable, comfortable, somewhat uncomfortable, somewhat, or very uncomfortable, uh, et cetera, because one to five is, for me, that's just a number. I think if you describe it for them, I, I think it's easier to answer.
I, I agree with that. I'm just saying you need more than three choices, because they're all, you're gonna have a, you know, veer toward the middle.
Agreed.
I think, um, so just some background on the survey, I should have mentioned this earlier. We did review templates from other districts in the surrounding areas and that's similar templates of what the other districts are using. I think when you have too many choices, you're, you're, you're gonna definitely widen the spread, um, to figure out what, if they're really comfortable, if they're not comfortable, we're just trying to get a feel, but I appreciate the feedback and of course, I didn't write all these questions, so.
Shannon, just, as I see another question, if you are, um, from a previous question, if I have a student that has special education now needs and GNT, can I click both?
Oh, yes, you can. So, um, let's just say I am in special education and I'm an E L person, I can click both of them.
Okay.
How comfortable? So, um, I have to answer this so I can continue. These, the, the long answers are not required, so families may choose to write a long answer or choose to skip that. It's not a required question as indicated. This question we added to really try to get a handle on the number of kids out there that perhaps there are family reasons why a family would not be able to return for a variety of reasons. So if, if I don't have this, I can click no. If you say yes, that there are specific circumstances that would, you know, impact your child coming to school, we are asking you to put your name here so that we, one of us administrators or a staff member can reach out to you to figure out how we can support educating your child moving forward.
So I, I kind of was confused by that question. I initially answered yes, because my wife is high risk. So I'm like, well, that's specific to me, you know, where that I'm considering about whether my child goes back to school or not. Then I saw the, they'll contact you and I was like, well, you know, it's a decision I'm gonna make based on what, what, uh, protocols and what things are put in place. So. I just, I, I don't know. It was a little confusing to me, but.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chen.
What I was envisioning is that, and we talked about this earlier, Larry, is that after we get this feedback back from families and then we review the data, we have a committee in place, um, I was thinking of it's called reentry committee, but whatever the group decides is the committee, um, that we would again send a survey saying, here's our plan, here's the proposal that the board has reviewed, the committee is recommending, and then we would dig a little deeper into how we would support each individual learner through that.
Okay.
Okay. For each possibility, please select whether you would consider it for your child or children. So basically it gives the scenarios that Larry and the board that you guys have already talked about, all students in school four to five days a week, you would consider or you would not consider, or possibly. All students in school four or five days a week with a virtual option for families who do not want their children to return. And then you click, you would consider it or you would not. Again, reduce class sizes, all students alternate, one week in person, one week virtual, that was discussed already. Reduce class sizes, elementary kids and, um, Larry already discussed this, K five through sixth grade in person four to five days a week, with seventh and eighth virtual learning five days a week. Virtual learning for all students that maybe if the families do not want to attend, um, in person at all, that this would be comfortable with that. And then again, this was the second shift option that was discussed.
You're missing the alternative that Larry discussed about seventh, eighth grade as a second shift, I think.
The last one.
Right here, to reduce the number of students in the building at any given time, would you send your child to school from 2:30 to 7:30?
Uh, yeah, but that's specific to seventh and eighth, so.
That's because it wasn't really this.
Yeah, seventh and eighth is not definitive.
So I'm just clicking these so that we can keep going. Do you have any comments on the possibility, again, allowing parents to say more specific things? This is talking about the health and safety of the children as we reenter the school and what we want to know here is how valuable, um, each of these items is viewed by our families. The cleaning of the school, I can't imagine anyone's not gonna say that's important, but, um, again, um, the social distancing, requiring masks, there's a lot of talk out there of whether children should be wearing masks or, um, so this is good feedback from parents. And then this was discussed as well, students and staff temperatures are checked during the school day we put. Okay, Danielle, I see your finger.
So, yes. So I wanted, I wondered if you could separate out the ask between students and staff requiring them to wear masks? So I, it's personally, it might be more important that all the adults are required to wear masks, but less important for parents or people that students wear them. So I wonder if we could separate out if, yeah.
That's a great idea. With that in mind, this is, again, more, um, questions about hand washing, hand sanitizer, how important is it? This is, um, limiting the visitors and volunteers inside the schools. Students only interact with their assigned classes, materials that are shared or cleaned, school buses run at half capacity, and bus drivers and students wear masks on buses. Obviously.
I would, I would separate that one too.
Did you hear Danielle?
Yes, got it.
Separate the bus one. And I will tell you that the bus consortia met today. I think the recommendation is gonna be no more than 24 students per bus, um, but that's not finalized, because that would maintain enough distance between, uh, children on the bus.
The purpose of this part was to see, um, we have families out there that perhaps would be willing to drive and that would allow us to plan for bussing, um, and the numbers of kids. So some kids may need a ride to school, some kids may need a ride home from school, some kids may not need transportation at all. And again, you can collect, click on both choices if you need bussing both ways.
Shannon, I hate to go back, you know, two quick things here. I, I was just going through my notes here. Did you ask about scrolling back up, or well, maybe we can't do it, about K four being, uh, do we need to ask about people's opinion on canceling K four?
I'll let Larry take that.
There's not a question on that. Cause I can't imagine, uh, K four parents saying, yeah, I don't want to go, because if they don't want to go, they don't sign their child up. So, uh, I think if, if, and again, I'm an early childhood advocate, I work as hard as I can to make sure that we have K four. But if it comes down to where, um, the reason I pick on K four is because legally it's, we're not responsible to teach four-year-old kindergarten. Responsible to teach five-year-old kindergarten, that's the law.
But we have parents who have kids and who might be entering K four. Yeah. You know, and, and also, you know, two questions. I mean, they're enrolled right now. I mean, are they gonna get that, uh, you know, this, uh, the survey? The potential K four students, because they probably should know that they're.
I, I believe so, because as soon as they are enrolled, they are added to our, um, email system. So yes, they will get the, they, they will have, get the survey.
And then the other thing is, uh, do we want to separate out for the younger kids, maybe? I don't know how, you know, we're talking about maybe face shields, uh, or, you know, clear mask. Do we want to specify that or, or, you know, do we just want to leave it a face mask? It just a thought that we might want to specify, you know, do you want people to wear face masks or, you know, shields or something else? And some of these questions where we thought we'll bring face masks, do we want to specify, you know, face mask or face shield? Or do we want to separate out the question, ask face shield instead of, you know, face mask?
I think that's, I just, I think that that's a little bit of overkill at this point. I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to have to promise everyone that we're gonna get face ma- face shield if all of a sudden every school in the country is looking for facial, and then we can't deliver on that. I just think that, I think that, you know, yes, that would be great and everyone would like a facial, but I, I, I mean. No, I just think, I think it's overkill at this point. I, I think what they're asking is we're just talking about safety right now and, and, and I think that that's what we should focus on, I mean.
I think, um, that was. Yeah, that's the goal of this, is to try, try to get an overview of what, um, parents and families are feeling is important. I think we would all agree that to be able to see the teacher's face with, using a shield is much more effective than the mask, especially for, um, kids that really need that social connection of seeing the shield versus the mask. Can I move on?
Please.
Okay. The next part is, um, talking about virtual learning, because, um, as Larry and Jenica mentioned, you know, flashback to flash forward of, if we end up having to have, um, any type of virtual learning, we want to make sure we are meeting the needs of our parents and families. So, um, what's most important and what is least important in these areas with technology, communication with the teacher and principal, help with technology, I'm just gonna keep clicking these, a consistent schedule that is easy to access, an environment as close to traditional as possible, meaning daily schedule and live lessons, and more interactions with teachers and students. Then this was really to make sure that we are supplying our families with what they need and how they're, how they're engaging in the learning. Again, whether they have a device at home, what, what it is, if they need a device from us so that we kind of have a need, be able to assess if we need to purchase more, um, devices. And then again, if they don't have an internet connection at home and we need a hotspot provided to them.
Don't we have some, some families who choose to not use the internet or choose to not have Wi-Fi in their home? So I don't know that they have a, have a representative in this. I prefer not to, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's an issue or if that's, I thought that we discussed that in, you know, I heard that at a meeting, but.
That definitely seemed to be the case, um, for the kids at Parkway, if they preferred paper, um, and they had the red bags for Parkway, but I do believe that most of the learning that took place at the middle school involved devices.
Okay.
Um, and then again, an open-ended question for them to ask if they want to ask something else about the reopening or say something else. And then, you know, our usual court that I don't like to forget, and then parents will be asked to submit.
So Shannon, uh, one question from the chat room. Um, and I know that I've gone back and forth. We might want to add a, a question to the scenarios of two days per week or alternating days instead of alternating weeks. Cause some parents might, would rather do alternating days. So that's a question.
I guess that's, would really be up to you if you feel like that's an option you would entertain. The ones that are listed here are the ones that we as the administrative team talked about, so.
Yeah, I do know that we, as a, as an administrative team, we, we talked about alternating days or two days a week and view that as very difficult to implement, but it might, we might, you know, maybe we have to because that's what our community needs. So I would say let's add that question in also.
All right. Anything on the, anything else on the parent survey? Otherwise I'll go to the staff.
Yeah, sorry. Carla, Carla had a good point. Um, and it was to the one, the question that I had asked about, uh, where it says special circum- circumstances. And then if yes, um, an administrator will contact you. She suggested making it optional for providing your name. So if you would like an administrator to contact you. I thought that was a good idea. And then I wondered on that last question, I'm trying to scroll, but I, I don't have control of the screen. Um, um, about what is most, wait, if you go back up a couple, what is most important to you? I just wonder if we want to add something about like mental health support or SBL or I like, I don't know if. I, I wonder, or if there's anywhere in the survey where we could gauge not specific needs necessarily, but whether that is something that, I mean, I know, we know our community is interested in that, but so maybe it's, maybe it's overkill. I don't know.
I think that is a huge concern. The document that Larry keeps referring to, every single section in the document, whether it's about teaching and learning, about special education is consistently focused on the social emotional needs of the kids. And that when we come back to school, that we need to be prepared to support the social emotional health um, of kids that have been, you know, pretty much traumatized with this pandemic at home and not able to engage with their friends. So that's definitely what I would recommend the committee, the reentry committee or, um, the mental health committee would work on is how we can support our families when we do return, um.
Okay.
However, way we do.
Okay.
Could you scroll down the list again? I just wanted to go through it again. So if you go, uh, up, so we, uh, go back up, I'm sorry, to the bottom part. So you talk about interaction. No, one more. I'm sorry. Uh, I apologize. Go back down. It was the bottom three they were looking at before. So an environment as close to, it's back up here to one, five.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Um, environment as close to traditional schools possible, daily scheduled lives, lessons. I don't see in here anything that says in-person learning. And, you know, I've talked to a couple of parents and they're like, you know what? It just hasn't worked for me, has worked for my kid, you know, regardless of student, you know, need, you know, the in-person interaction. You know, i- is, is the key. And so it doesn't really talk about in-person interaction here.
The top says if we have to go to virtual learning, that's why.
Yeah, this whole category is about virtual learning. I'm sorry, Andy interrupted. Um, I think Karen, when you go back the other pages. Um, let me see if I can go back. Um, the other pages, when you have the opportunity to, to give your, um, input about what scenario you would prefer or consider, I think this is where parents do get to say that they would really prefer or consider coming into school in person. If they do not want virtual, they can clearly, they do not consider virtual learning. They don't want, you know, um, every other week, they can say that, that virtual learning. And then they can obviously have comments here to talk about those possibilities that virtual learning did not work for our family. That we are not interested in virtual. Unless you think that's not enough and you would like something more specific.
Well, you know, I mean, so I was saying two, third, uh, two thoughts. And one of them you just reminded me of, and I don't want to jump back just yet, but the first thought that I had is we talked about in-person in one column. We talked about virtual, you know, in this section, but we don't, but is there somewhere in there where we talked about blending? Like if we have a blended environment, this is what you'd want. And then we talked about somewhere about staggering the courses. But I don't remember there was something that said, well, if we're doing virtual, is this how you would like it or not? Um, I don't know. We need to rethink, you know, having some, you know, talk about how the combination of virtual and in-person learning would look, but you know, like to this categorized as virtual learning. This suggestion here is virtual learning entirely. So, you know, shouldn't we talk about, you know, some component in here of in-person learning too?
I agree with that question for the fact that, um, I'm hoping I'm wrong, but the state could come out and say all schools are closed for October. And so we are forced into virtual. And that, that's the, what I was trying to get at from that type of question is if, if we are forced into being virtual, what's most important to you as a parent?
Sure. And then by the way, you know, I'm looking right at that square about, uh, the, uh, seventh and eighth grade virtual learning. And then that you're focusing on Shannon. And it occurs to me that in any of these questions for seventh and eighth or for K four, whatever it is, you know, we could be having anyone who answers the survey, give their opinion on K four. Or anyone who answered the survey, give their opinion on, you know, seventh or eighth grade. And, you know, I'm wondering if, and not that there's necessarily a way to enforce it, but you know, can we put a question there that says qualified, are you a parent of a seventh or eighth grade? Uh, you know, student so that if someone says, I'd love to have some eighth grade virtual and they're in sixth grade, right? And if I, if I have a sixth grader, I'm going to say, yeah, let's have seventh, eighth grade virtual. That's for fewer people in the building, right? But if I'm a seventh, eighth grade parent, you know, I might say something different, right? Like I'd like to have my kids in school. I'd like to have my kid in school. If, but you know, there's, you know, eight grades, right? So how many people are going to, you know, ask for seventh and eighth grade to be in the schools? I guess my point. So if you qualify it and say, are you a parent of, and, and that's what you're pointing at right there. And I think that is the question.
And, and we can differentiate our, our answer. So we can look at just seventh and eighth grade parents who respond.
And that's what I want to make sure because I think that that's what, you know, something that we'll have to focus on, not just for seventh and eighth grade, but bringing things else that affects students of a particular type.
So the, the wonderful thing about the Google survey is that after families fill the survey out, it puts, all the data shows up in a spreadsheet and then you can sort the spreadsheet. Um, I could sort it by all kids in seventh and eighth grade. I could sort it by our families in seventh and eighth grade. I could sort it by families that clicked on special education. Obviously that's a passion of mine to support our kids in special education. Um, so that I can really hone in on the smaller groups within the thing without really identifying who they are. Um, I will make that part optional, as you mentioned here, um, that we are really just want to make sure at some point, if a, a family is not going to send their kids to school for, um, medical or health reasons, we will need to have a conversation with them at some point to say, okay, here's what the school is doing. How are we going to help your child at home? Um, because your child is not able to come in because they're medically fragile, but we will still be providing them services. So eventually when a real plan is put into play, we will need, um, each person to commit to what they're going to do so that we can educate them. But you're, I could definitely put it as an option here so people don't feel, um.
Well, I just, I just, it just doesn't specify health reasons or that a person has actually made the decision that their child will not be returning. So I think the option right now is a good idea, making it optional.
Larry, tell me if I'm wrong here, but, um, I believe it was the discussion that the superintendents were having regarding that is that, um, with HIPAA laws that people weren't able to ask. You have a health condition and then you had to indicate that because it's really none of our business why you're choosing to keep your child home. We just are trying to make sure we're planning accordingly for anyone that is keeping their child at home.
Yeah, the, the question came right from the Nicolay's attorney. So I didn't have to pay the attorney fees. Um, and then I do like, somebody made a comment and we will do this, uh, do the opt-in, or ask parents if they are interested in taking part of the community, uh, committee. And that as a final question on the survey. So that way, uh, we can, again, with the, obviously they'd have to put their name down then. Um, so that we can contact them to be part of that committee.
Okay. All right. So, um, onto the staff then. Yes?
There were a couple of comments on this, but I don't know if we're.
I, I'm trying to go on. I think the, um, Mr. And Mrs. Stettler, they're asking, um, about a video. And I know that, uh, Dr. Carver did that for, for Nicolay. I think I can, I can put in a, uh, a, a video just explaining it. I, I shared with you just a scenario, not saying this was going to be my scenario. I'm not, I'm not bought into the K five through sixth grade. I'm concerned and people are kind of answering that, that it's, it's just, it's diff, I don't have a plan right now. I don't have a specific plan. So I don't want to skew the results by saying, uh, other than my goal is as many kids in school as possible. That's my goal. Um, but I really want to get this survey out and get their feedback and then do follow-up surveys as we get more and more specific with the plan. So.
Um, all right. Well, the staff survey is similar to, um, the parent survey is just not as intense because the staff obviously are, are just going to be working in the buildings, not necessarily sending their children to the buildings. Um, and again, Larry was asking for their feedback, but knowing that, um, the decision is that of his and the boards to make the final decision. Um, this one, we separated it, staff that work at Parkway, work at Glen Hills are both similar questions. And I'm, I'm sure you're going to say the same thing about the three choices. Or talk to Larry about that when we're done with this. And how did you make the selection? Again, this one's similar for each possibility. Select, you know, the same scenarios that were presented to the parents are being presented to the staff. Again, especially as Larry mentioned, if this should say seven thirty, I think I didn't change that one. But if we have staff members that would work, it would work for their families to teach a second shift. And then comments. It's like I need an extra clipper person doing. And then again, this is about the safety precautions, about cleanliness of schools, same exact questions as the, um, parent survey. I'll separate the bus driver thing again, as mentioned. Um, this allows staff members the opportunity to say if there's a reason that they could not return. And then if they answer yes, that please type their name below so that an administrator can contact them as well. And that's it for that.
Do they not have a similar, is there one question at the end that's missing that the parents get asked about most important to least important if things are all virtual or something to that effect?
Yeah, we didn't, we're not asking the staff that question. Because from a staff viewpoint, they're all, all five of those should be most important to our staff.
Yeah.
And we will make sure that it is. So.
We, we want to tailor our tech or virtual learning supports to the needs of the families. And if the families are saying they need more consist, consistent scheduling from, um, teachers, then that would be our focus that we would deliver that message to teachers. Or if they feel they need, um, live lessons, or if they felt they need more help with technology, then we would make sure that we focus our professional development around those areas. To make sure that the staff is meeting the needs of the students and the families.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to ask some open-ended question about what kind of support they might feel they would need either professionally or personally. Just returning to school or if that's being asked in a different way, maybe not on this survey or how that's being considered. I would just put that out there in terms of thinking about their wellness and how we're going to support teachers and staff.
Um, the professional development, um, is a, that's a great point. In the staff newsletter that's going out tomorrow, we have an entire professional development survey, um, asking the staff what they exactly need as far as PD goes, professional development to support them at this time. We don't necessarily talk about the wellness piece. So I think that's a good point. Um, but they will get a survey tomorrow, um, that Jenica put together, um, along with Beth Woodward, one of our teachers, to talk about the professional learning needs.
Okay.
Anything else from the shared screen or I can get rid of this view and you guys can have the screen.
I think that's unless we have, uh, any final comments or questions from, from the board. Uh, for those of you who are hitting the chat room, thank you. I appreciate it from, and, and, but otherwise, board members.
Well, Shannon, first off, I want to say thank you for doing all that you did. It's a pretty thorough survey and, you know, I'm glad that you're spending time with us today. Um, in terms of looking at changes, will you send out any, uh, changes to the board and give us a couple of days to go back and look at it again?
Absolutely. Um, it sounds like the changes that you're requesting are more for the parents, which won't go out till Tuesday. So that gives me, you know, some time to we get and run it by everybody again. Um, the staff one, I'll update the discussion items that were said before I put it in the newsletter tomorrow, but.
Thanks.
And then I'd just like to say that, um, I appreciate the feedback, but I, I didn't do this alone. Um, Larry helped a lot and sort of the other administrators to put it all together. So.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a quick question. I noticed in the chat, um, uh, it was Eric and Tracy Stettler, without knowing what plans are being considered, parents will lean towards uncomfortable due to lack of information. Can you consider adding a video? Um. I had to step away. So I don't know if that was responded to, but I was going to ask Larry, to what extent he's got a write-up of whatever he recommended forty-five minutes ago, uh, at the outset of the meeting. I know you had some recommendations, but it would, I think it would be nice if you put those in bullet points, whatever the case may be for review while taking the survey.
Yep. I did kind of talk a little bit about that, about not wanting to throw that out there. Cause really my, my plan would be if school started tomorrow, this is what I would recommend. I don't know if that's my real recommendation after, I want to get the feedback from the parents. Cause if 60% of the parents say they want to be virtual, then that's going to change what I'm going to be proposing to you. So I understand the question I asked, but I don't want to, for my lawyer friends, I don't want to lead the witness into thinking something that it's a given that we're going to do K five through six in small classrooms because that's not a given. And that's why I started it. This is just a wild idea that could, we could make work, but I don't know what the answer is yet until we get all the feedback.
You don't want to leave any incriminating documents, Larry?
Yes.
I also just want to remind everyone that we're, we're, we, we want to caution in comparing two different districts. How one superintendent handles this is different from a different one. And, and they're both have the same goal at the end. Larry's just trying to get the, the input ahead of time. Whereas for those of you familiar with Nicolay, we were given kind of three plans via this video that we're talking about. So whatever way this is happening, the, the, the end game is the same, the, the safety and health of our staff and our students. So it's just a different approach.
But, you know, and talking about what we were talking about before with the committee enhancing communication. You know, and, and Larry, you just have a way with being able to kind of explain what is that we're trying to do. I think it would be great for you to attach to the email, maybe a one-minute videos, uh, summarizing what we're trying to do by getting community input. That's just me. I mean, I understand why you might not want to do it. You don't have to recommend anything, but you know, it's an opportunity for sending something out to you, you know, to let people see something, uh, you know, that they haven't seen in a couple of months.
Yeah. And I think, I think doing a quick video at the beginning of it makes perfect sense to me. And I will, I'll put that in just saying we, we really don't have a decision yet. Um, but we really need the input from our community members. And it can be all in-person. It could be all virtual, depending on what that input comes from our community. So.
That's, I think that, that's a great idea. I think that you'll, uh, you know, I think having more opportunity to make that personal connection, especially right now, it's a great way to instill confidence. You know, that, uh, we're doing this. I mean, right now we have 30 people who are listening to the meeting and they're seeing firsthand how the sausage is getting made. They don't get, you know, that bird's eye view, uh, all the time, but, um, you know, I, it's important for us to, uh, respond to larger community and just make sure that they understand that we're on top of this. And uh, you know, for those of you who were here at the committee, I mean, it's 30 plus people. This is how our committee meetings go because we're trying to work these things out and, uh, you know, and try to, uh, nitpick and, uh, figure out the best way to move forward. And so. And so, you know, we got through a lot of details today, and I think that it's been very productive. So thank you for that, to the board and to the administration, and to you, Larry.
Any other last words?
Oh, I just messaged Shannon real quick, I was just wondering if we add a question to the staff survey about wanting to join the committee, if it would make sense? I mean, I feel like you would want some staff members, community members, but, so, okay.
We'll put that on both of them.
And I also think that what was just kind of passed over, just because we don't need to give input on this, is that important survey for the teachers about PD. Because that's huge moving forward next year, considering, trying to figure out where they are and where they need to be. And that's just as important as these other, you know, surveys too. So as a teacher, I'm glad that you're doing that for our staff, at Glendale River Hills also.
And that's going out tomorrow, so. And that's, kudos to Jenica, she, she's the one who put that together, kind of with the other curriculum directors throughout our partner districts. So we're kind of doing it collectively.
So will our next board? Meeting be primarily like this, but with the opportunity for public and visitor participation, is this our main focus?
There are a few action items on the July fifteenth that you have to do. First of all, we, as a board, you have to adopt and make a statement that you are part of the Wisconsin standards and that we teach the standards. There's a budget that we have to pass, so where do those business items right off the bat? And then open it up for more of a parent input conversation. And then I will also have the results from the survey, so that I can share those results. And then I'll probably share the results first and then open it up, because the results might answer some of the questions that people might have to begin with. And at that time, I'm guessing between now and then, you will talk to Andy, but I'll also talk to Andy. And we'll get something else on the calendar for probably mid to late July also. Anyone else?
Okay, Larry, I think that leaves us at adjournment, what do you think? Okay, then, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, then, all in favor, Danielle? And Molly Kuchowiac? Teresa Seem? I think Tamika has already had to depart. Yeah, and Andrew Frank will tie, so meetings adjourned, again, thank you to everyone who came and also voiced your comments as well. Thank you for joining us today.
Thanks, Shannon, thanks, Larry.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, thank you.